That during the applicant appellate presentation that if Mr. Seavy is there, he could further elaborate. And then meanwhile, Councilmember Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. So what is the boundary of the reconnaissance survey list? Is that all of downtown? What is the, what's the actual boundaries?
It's basically, it is the same boundaries or downtown specific plan. Because as we were preparing that plan, we wanted to understand the implications on potential historic districts. So on the very uppermost end, it's basically Van Buren Street. And then it goes to Del Monte Avenue, all the way to Lake El Estero. And then I believe it's sort of, it cuts through basically on Fremont Street. So it's, it's a fairly large planning area.
So this particular property is not a standalone inside that particular reconnaissance survey? Meaning as they drove by and looked at all the properties, they said, oh, that one looks like a storied building. We need to put that in the reconnaissance survey list. That did not happen. That's not a part of the reconnaissance survey.
So the reconnaissance survey list, it, it sort of did happen that way. So let me just explain, a reconnaissance survey list is a historian driving through the neighborhood, doing some research and saying, these are the ones that need further research. That's all it means on the reconnaissance level. In fact, they have a designation, I think of seven N, saying, we need to go back and look. And so what that's done for us from a planning perspective, if I compare it like to the new Monterey Historic Survey, which I think we had like 800 properties surveyed. I think only 10% of those required additional research. So it gives us a very comprehensive look at the area, so we don't miss any properties. And then it, and then to actually become designated or to go to that next level, the city code requires an intensive historic survey. And actually, that's the same that happens at the, for the California National Register. You go from a reconnaissance, which is broad brushed, you know, there may be something to this property. We need to go back and look versus intensive is, is supposed to be a final conclusion on whether or not that property is potentially eligible. And so Mr. Seavy prepared an intensive survey. The conclusion was that it was not eligible. And now that has since been reviewed by two other historians that have concluded or agreed with that conclusion.
Thank you. So Mayor, I have one other question and then I'll, then I'm done. So tonight, we approved under the Mills Act, West Franklin Street, 940 West Franklin Street. And it didn't seem like it, it came to the same level that requiring this property, the three different areas. I don't know. Can you just tell me the difference between the property that now and this property, the West Franklin Street? And why would West Franklin Street be considered historic and the other property would not?
So that's why we rely on the architectural historians to provide us that perspective. And basically with the West Franklin property, the decision was is that there was enough character defining features that it's still qualified. Other structures, the, the outside of the building may not be as important. And that actually happened in Canary Row a lot. Where, or, or if a particular group was associated with the building, like the Japanese or something like that, where we're trying to tell a broader story based on cultural migration patterns or something like that. There may be other reasons why the building is significant. And I know the HPC really struggles with this. When they review properties, they're reviewing what's changed. And there's pretty robust discussion at the HPC, which ones they think qualify and which ones they think don't. I would say it's more of an, you know, it's, it's based on the criteria presented to you. But that's why we have qualified architectural historians making recommendations.
So, so it doesn't necessarily have to check off the boxes of the three criteria. It could be just one, the architecture is historic and that's the reason why we keep the building. It doesn't necessarily mean that someone famous lived there. It could just be just the building itself.
It could be one of the three. And then it also has to have the seven aspects of integrity.
Okay, great. That, that answers my question. Thank you, Kim. Thanks, Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Any more questions? All right, let's go ahead then, please, to the applicant appellate. And we are welcoming Mr. Lombardo, I believe, and possibly Mr. Seavy. Because one of the questions was for Mr. Seavy was the influence, cultural and proximity of the Japanese community and the usage of this building by the Japanese community as possible employees. Just what that connection is, if there is any. So are we ready to go ahead then to our applicant appellate? You're on, Nat.
Yep, and we've unmuted our, Mr. Tony Lombardo with the last three digits, 574. Mr. Lombardo, if you could please unmute yourself by dialing star six. We can then hear you on audio. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can and welcome. And what's, too bad we can't see you, but you're coming in loud and clear on the audio.
I'm very sorry you can't see me because I wore a suit and a tie for you this afternoon. So I'll, I'll be brief. I'd like to thank the staff for their excellent presentation. I think this is, it's, you know, there's, there's no fault or blame to be ascribed to either the HRB or the Planning Commission. The applicant, this is before I was involved in the application, you know, had Mr. Seavy and Dr. Kirk on their behalf make the application, provide the information. It appeared that the commission and the HRB felt uncomfortable without an independent, if you will, review or analysis prepared. So after the Planning Commission, me, after the Planning Commission decision, as staff mentioned, the city then hired Meg Clovis, who's the very highly esteemed former county historian for the County of Monterey, to peer review the work that was done by Mr. Seavy and Dr. Kirk. And his staff stated, she concurred just briefly, you know, the, the report's done based on what's called a windshield survey, or you might call it a drive-by survey, just looking at the facade of a building and saying, well, does that look like something that could be old or historic? Clearly, part of this building, a portion of the building is quite old, or at least early 20th century. And then, as Kim mentioned, it's, you have to do a deeper dive into whether it qualifies. As Ms. Clovis very aptly described in her report, this building does not qualify as a historic structure because it does not embody any type of distinctive style or characteristic. It doesn't represent the work of a master. It does not contain high artistic value. And both, all three historical consultants described the lack of what they call architectural integrity in the building because of the various and numerous alterations that have occurred over, over the period of its existence. The question that Councilmember Hoffa asked about the association with the Japanese, Japanese neighborhood, predominant Japanese neighborhood next door. Kent, Kent is here with me and, and he can answer that. But in a, in a nutshell, you know, as an industrial area, it wasn't a, an occupation that the Japanese immigrants were particularly drawn to because their main occupation was fishing in Monterey during the early 20th century. But Kent, if you can holler into the, into the mic, then you can elaborate.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor and honorable members of the City Council?
Yes, we can. Kent, nice to hear from you. Go for it.
Del Monte Avenue was a line from early on of industrial activities. You had a large steam plant that supplied the energy for the electric railway that ran up through the city. It was an area for all of us who are gray haired will remember, you couldn't see the ocean, for the automobile repair shops along that avenue in front of El Estero and running all the way into town prior to the tunnel. No, not at all. The Japanese and the Sicilians intermingled very, very socially. In fact, the Japanese spoke Sicilian before they spoke English. Because they not only were involved in the fishing industry and agriculture too, but they used the game, the diamonds out there for social activities. So they were together. But they, I never found anything that suggested that they were deeply associated with laundry.
Thank you, Kent. That's very interesting info. Thank you for the mini history lesson. Back to you, Tony, please, Mr. Lombardo.
Unless the council has any other questions, I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time for comment after the public testimony.
Yes, of course. So are there any questions for the Mr. Lombardo, Mr. Seavy at this point from the council? I see none. Nat, let's open it up to public comment, please.
Let's see if we have any public comment. And if anyone is calling in, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Otherwise, I only have hands raised, which we have from Mr. Lombardo and Ms. Clovis. Oh, we do have one here. Last three digits is 185. If you could please unmute yourself by dialing star six, we can then take your comment. Please dial star six. And we can, we can hear you with the last three digits, 185. Okay. Well, I'm not sure if, if they're following along here, but they raised their hand. And to be clear, they, they have not unmuted themselves, so we cannot hear them. Otherwise, there are no other public comments.
All right, let's just wait a moment. All right, so we're not getting, and 185 just disappeared from my screen.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add one more comment, I was, I just thought of.
Well, yeah, just wait a moment, Tony, until I close public comment, please.
Sure.
Yeah, any, then, do we have any, it looks like our one potential public commenter was not able to come through.
Yeah, can, can we connect with the, with the person who wanted to show three slides? Kim, is that possible with you?
And, yeah, and then, and then 185 is, is raising their hand again. I mean, we can, we can try them one more time.
Let's try them again, please. Might be the same person, yes.
Yeah. So whoever's out there on 185, please dial star six on your telephone so that you can unmute yourself. Star six. Unfortunately, we're not getting them to unmute themselves. Oh, no, and then they just hung up. So they're no longer with us on the line.
Okay, well, if they do try again, we, of course, we'll try to accommodate them, whoever they are. Okay, so our respected city manager, Hans Ussler, was talking about someone who wanted to share slides or is, would that be done by our planning department or would that be part, public comment?
Yeah, that, that would have been basically the person that wanted to, to not only call in and comment, shared three slides with us that we were supposed to show during the three minute period. Kim, is that correct?
Correct. I have the three slides if you want me to show them.
Well, let me ask our, our very responsible city attorney. Would that be the sort of thing that we do normally? We, we aren't, emails, for example, go into the public record, but they aren't shared at these meetings because we would be going forever. So procedurally, is there any problem with sharing these three slides or should it be part of public comment?
It, it should be a part of the, the public comment.
Yes, what I was thinking, right? Okay. Why don't we do this? I, I'll close the public hearing comment part of this meeting. And again, if 185 does try one more time, we will try one more time. But meanwhile, Mr. Lombardo, back to you for final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I neglected to mention in terms of the future of this property, it was an industrial laundry, of course. And having been an industrial laundry, there's a fairly significant opportunity for additional housing and additional commercial space in this, in this location because of the amount of water credit this property maintains. So the, you know, reuse of this property could be a fairly significant improvement to the City of Monterey because I, I think it probably goes without saying that, you know, there's not likely ever to be another industrial laundry in this building. And nor is the liquor store anything unique to the, to the City of Monterey. So I just, I neglected to mention before that this, this property has some very significant potential for future reuse because of its former use that I think also is going to be important to the city. So thank you. We, we agree with the staff recommendation. We respectfully request that you support the staff recommendation and the work of the three very excellent historians that did the deep dive on this property and have, you know, researched it to the nth degree to conclude that it's not historical. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. So we'll come back to the council then for discussion and deliberation. One of the things I'll start off with, I recently watched a planning commission meeting. And the planning commission was looking at an appeal from another commission. And they were very sensitive to the, the point of they didn't want to, the semblance that they were just overturning some of their friends. And the du novo, the way it's situated is it's a new hearing. So however we go, whether we uphold or deny the appeal, we certainly respect and appreciate our HPC and our planning commission members. And so we want to, and I've been in the five zero club, I've been in the one four club. So on votes over 40 years. And so none of this is personal. It's always what we all think is the best for the city that we love. Saying that, I'm going to ask Kim one more time. The council has new information that the planning commission did not have. And I believe that was the peer review by Ms. Clovis, as I understand it.
Correct. That's accurate.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Allen, unmute and start us off.
Yeah, I guess I have another question. So I mean, as I'm looking at this, I'm loathe and, you know, kind of cautious about wanting to overturn both the HPC and the planning commission. And I think they were right to sort of want an independent review. We have that. I think the fact that the building, half of the building is effectively a 1960s building is, you know, worth consideration. But on the other hand, when I look at the facade of the French laundry, you know, that to me just intuitively looks historical. I'm wondering, Kim, if there's a way for us to approve the appeal. But maybe it's a different venue, maybe, maybe it's in the future if this building is remodeled. I would want to have that front facade retained in some way, if possible. So I guess I'm wondering if there's a way for us to do that, to both support the appeal, but also, I don't know, provide some protection for at least the facade.
Alan, can I ask you, can I, can I ask a question about your question?
Yeah, sure.
Are you talking about the building that has the actual sign, French laundry? Or are you talking about the building next to it? Because it's two different looking buildings.
I'm talking about the 1928.
Yeah, the one that's on the sidewalk, correct?
I'm not sure which is, to me, they both.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah, it's the left-hand side one.
I just wanted to make sure because there are two different buildings, really, when you look at. One's off the street and one's on the street. So I just wanted to make sure I'm on the same page you are, Alan.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things on that, Alan, was when the very low affordable senior housing was built on Van Buren, one of the things, that was city owned property, it's different. But one of the things that we did ask for and gave direction was some kind of display, which is in the lobby, just acknowledging the, the homes that used to be there historically and so on. And I know the Cooper Malera has also done a, a display of some of the original things that were there. So I think we could probably suggest this going forward, that that be included. I don't think we could require it, but certainly it's, it's a very nice request that the applicant going forward may want to consider.
If, um, oh, I'm sorry, if you wouldn't mind my interruption. The action before you is more narrow. It is, you know, either the property is on the list or off the list. And, and so we really can't overreach that.
Yes.
Lane.
Got it.
I guess we could, I guess we could say, gee, wouldn't it be nice if?
You can make a statement of your, of your desires, but it's, that would be all it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Any more thoughts? Are we ready to move on it, Dan? Councilmember Dan?
Let me just make one comment on, when I looked at the, the two pictures, one of when it was in 1928, the facade, and then the one where they moved the doors, they, they, they added the windows. To me, it's two separate facades. And the one that's currently in place doesn't seem like it, it's, the integrity has been changed as several of the, it's already been spoken. So for me, the, the building is already, already changed to where it's, doesn't look like the 1928 building anymore. So that's why I, I, I don't see it as being as, as historical as some people think it is because it's already changed.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyler.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting to be called on so soon. No, I, I agree with my colleagues here. I think it's important for us to look at the fact that we've had three experts in, in this area that have validated the, the reasoning, I think, for the direction that it looks like we're going to be taking here. And I think it's important to think about this to the extent that the City of Monterey really values its history. I mean, we have a body made up of, of residents that specifically look at things like this. So I think it kind of really speaks to how important this is as a value to, to the city. And, and so that being said, I think we have to be careful when we use this historical designation as well. Because if we just use it for, for everything and it doesn't really have the historical value and significance, it takes away from those opportunities and, and projects that really do have it. And we really want to be able to shine that light of the historical experience. So I, I, I hear what, what Alan's saying. And if there were something that we could do to have some kind of plaque or something, I think that would be a great way of, of identifying. But, but I'm in support of the, the appeal.
Okay, Councilmember Ed, you were next, please.
Yes. They, these are always fascinating because it's such a deep dive into the history of the building and the principles of it. But, but to the matter of the motion, I'm going to support the motion because it does not appear to me to, to hold on to any of the historical value that meets the criteria. But I just wanted to note some of the things in the document, that, that's Toffner Lane behind it. So the building was built by John Toffner. And Toffner Lane is, it's an entirely industrial, light industrial area with the credit union right behind it. So it, it has significance in the industrial age of, of the twenties, thirties and forties and beyond into Monterey. However, the, the area looks like it's, it's ripe for refresh with the current use because it just doesn't fit the criteria. And going back through the documents, I wanted to take note of the, the language that comes through with the competing historical, I'll call them experts. And I appreciate their, their ability to weave through something that's complicated. But one of the comments was, what do you call this period piece? And it was interesting that one of them called it eclectic. And the, the other one had a different term. And I highlighted them because I thought it was interesting that one was called a Spanish colonial revival by one of our experts that we listened to in the documents. And the other was calling it a Spanish eclectic style. And so there could be an argument here between the two of them about what to call it. But there was no difference of opinion between all three of the experts that said that it basically had lost its historical significance. And there were really minor remnants that were still remaining on the building. Mr. Toffner, in the documents also, it's identified that he came from Wisconsin, went to Oregon, then settled in Monterey, lived on Monroe Street, and actually participated in designing and building the Monterey High School, Pacific Grove Library, and First National Bank, and the Holman Building. So he had a significant career. So although the building that he built no longer holds on to its historical definition, I, I think that there should be some consideration of the person's work with the name. So I think there's a way to honor the person's name in the future. When you look at Monterey High School, I drive by it every day. Dan, you worked there for many years. You know, so there's a lot of significance to the name. So with that, I just want to say that I, I concur that this, this should not be deemed to be historical, support the motion. But I just wanted to say that that does not go by lightly. Reading all the documents and trying to study and understand the qualifications for this, it just no longer qualifies because it's been remodeled so many times and lost its historical integrity. But kudos to the man that was here that worked with his team to place his legacy here with many buildings that we all know. So when you drive by Holman's Highway, or Holman's Building, or you drive by the Monterey High School, you can think of John Toffner.
If I can add on.
Clyde, you're muted? Okay, yeah, there isn't a motion yet, but we, it's pretty clear where we're going. Councilmember Dan?
Yeah, if I can just add on to Ed's comments. Even though it doesn't meet the criteria of a famous person in Monterey, I think the Toffner family would probably disagree with that because of the amount of work and, and that he has done on the peninsula. And the people that own the property are on now and they're listening to us. And, and there's a good possibility that maybe they, they'll take in, in account. And I think you make a really good point for the historic value of, of just at least the area and that, and that's a street. Thank you, Ed, for bringing that up.
Yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we, I'm turning back to see the right language here, rejecting the, or supporting the appeal.
Yeah.
And deeming that it is not historical.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion because I do believe the integrity of the building has been compromised. But I do believe John J. Toffner was historical, was historically relevant. And that bothers me a little bit that the, that the historical reviews didn't find that because I, I think Ed, Ed made a really strong case there. Those are historically significant contributions. But I'm, I'm going to support the motion. And in the future, I think if that building is redesigned, I would support having some sort of, some sort of historical memorial there recognizing him.
You mean like the Toffner Building?
Exactly.
Well, and I hope we can hold on to the Toffner Lane name. But I think, I've been in that building and when you look around, it's, it's been cut up so many ways and so many times that I wished it had been preserved better from its original. But obviously, in the sixties, it was repurposed multiple times and just significantly changed it. So that's the reason why I make the motion.
All right, we got it. And thank you. Again, I think council's very cognizant of his, our history. And I believe for me, the, the difference is HPC and planning commission, I think, didn't not have the advantage of a third impartial quote unquote peer review. And I think that's a practice that our staff's going to start doing. They did that on a different item, and that was very helpful to the planning commission. So I think that extra evidence enables me to support the motion. So thank you, Kim and staff. Hans and Ro call, please.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Okay, our next public appearance item is to recognize June as. as LGBTQ Pride Month and authorize pride flag display at City Hall for the month of June. And what I'd like to do is turn it over to our respected city manager, Hansus Lar, because the staff report, I thought was very well written. I'll invite him to share that. Then I would like to ask Councilmember Williamson to share his thoughts, because last year he brought this to us, and we very much appreciate that. And then I'll share some of the, the resolution as the final presentation, then and open it up to the public. So with that, we'll go to our respected city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for framing it so, so nicely. June is the month that is being dedicated as the LGBTQ plus Pride Month, and it goes actually back to June 28, 1969, when there was a riot by gay, by gay community members against a police raid that took place at Stonewall in, in New York City, I believe, in Greenwich Village. And the, the date marks the, the, this event, and 28th of June is basically the commemorative date of the Stonewall Riot, and tracing back to, to those days where the gay community objected against the police raid and also became a factor in, in speaking up for their rights, LGBTQ plus has evolved. And as the mayor pointed out, we recognized last year also the LGBTQ plus community. And with that, we, we are proposing again to, to recognize June as the LGBTQ plus month, as well as raising a flag at City Hall. And I want to give credit also again to Councilmember Williamson, who brought this whole topic forward. And that concludes my brief general report.
Thank you, Hans. And let's turn it over to our friend and colleague, Councilmember Tyler, and thank you once again for bringing this to us. I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Hans and C staff, for the support in bringing this forward to the, to the council today. What's interesting about Pride Month is that it's one of those celebrations that we share around the world. And that says a lot, it says something about the beauty of the queer community and accepting everybody for who they are. And so for, and some may not know, I will use queer a couple of times. I think it's just another way of being able to describe the LGBTQ plus community. And sometimes it's just easier to say, so I'll, I'll use it at moments here. But you know, obviously, we've been affected by the pandemic, and we're going into the second year now where we're not going to be hosting an in-person pride. But it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be taking these opportunities to celebrate. And so these are just one of those small ceremonial opportunities that we have to celebrate Pride Month. And so I appreciate Hans's defining some of the history associated with Pride Month and what led to June being designated as Pride Month. But I think it's also important to, to understand that it wasn't just Stonewall. I think in a lot of ways, it was the catalyst, but there was a lot of anti-gay legal systems in some of those which still exist. So really, Pride Month is just an opportunity to recognize, celebrate our queerness. Everybody has the right to live a dignified life. And so I'm, I'm super honored to be able to, you know, be on council, be in a position of power where I, I, I can be out and proud and walk around a community with my partner and be accepted and respected. But not everybody has those same rights and opportunities. And obviously, there's still a lot of work to do. There are conflicts to accept all, even within the queer community. Much work is being done to expand the rights of those, particularly in the trans community. So more simply, the LGBTQ plus community continues to fight for equal rights, to start families, to get married, adopt children, fight discrimination, hate speech, and the right to simply exist as they are. So I'll just kind of end with here with a few asks. We need more allies, and think about using this month to become more educated. It's also important for us to recognize all the folks out there that are still closeted. For those that don't know, I am a co-chair for Monterey Peninsula Pride. We started a nonprofit in 2017. And so we're the organization that is hosting pride every year. And in the first year, in 2017, somebody handed me a note that was from a student at a local school. And I, I read it aloud during the first pride. But this individual wrote a note saying, hey, I wish I could be there, but my parents won't let me come.
Remember that.
So this is something that people still live with today. I mean, this is real. This is what we're fighting for. I'm, part of the resolution tonight is also the request to raise the pride flag in Monterey. And I believe this is the first time. Can anybody correct me if I'm wrong? So I think this is a moment to celebrate in and of itself. I'm super excited about that opportunity, and I appreciate my colleagues' support in getting this to happen. And then finally, I'll end here with, just be kind to one another. We're all different, but we're more alike than not. And with that, we should celebrate our differences, because what would life be like if we were all the same? I love you all.
Thank you very much, Tyler. We appreciate you, you bringing this to us and your story. And looking at our resolution, I want to make sure, okay, there we go. Yes, I'm unmuted. Back to the resolution. And as the city of Monterey does recognize and proclaim the month of June 2021 as Pride Month, we join a lot of municipalities, cities all over the country, and not only supporting the rights of the LGBTQ liberation movement and community, but the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. I think there are some really good points here from the proclamation I would, I will continue to share. And our nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth. And the Monterey City Council calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and to work to eliminate prejudice everywhere exists, it exists. And society at large is increasingly supports the LGBTQ equality. And it's essential to acknowledge the need for education and awareness, vital to the end of discrimination and prejudice. And the city commends the bravery, bravery and courage of all those in the LGBTQ community that face diversity, adversity, and various forms of violence. And it's very important, not only to stand up to any discrimination, but all of it. I'm reminded that during the Asian, this Asian community and Pacific Islander rally, the, the need for all of us to stand up, not be silent. So as a final, whereas Pride Month influences an awareness and provides support and advocacy for cities across the world, including here. And it is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And so the Monterey City Council is very, hopefully going to pass this resolution, and very pleased to declare this Pride Month and to fly the flag as indicated near City Hall. So I just wanted to share some of the highlights of that. And as we know, equal rights is for everyone. We have the Asian community. I listened to President Biden today, who gave a a very moving speech about Greenwood and Tulsa, if you don't. And the second part was more political, but if you listen to the first part of his speech and how horrific that was, and the president's call for the end of this, and it's all a fabric that we need to work on together. So with that, we have public comment now?
We do, let's see, we do not have public comment at this time, but no, no public comment, no hands raised, sir.
Okay, back to the council for a motion on the resolution, please.
A move that we approve the resolution as presented?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All right, seeing that, I think Hans and Tyler did such a great job. We don't need to add anything. So roll call, please.
Councilmember Hoffa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. And let's go to council comments. My council comment is, I'm going to be out of here very shortly. The Monterey High School graduation starts in 20 minutes. We'll have to sneak in the back door. I was very honored to be invited by the superintendent and board to attend that on behalf of the city. And that's it for me. And it's an exciting time out there with all of our graduates, and I hope they have a beautiful, wonderful world to, to graduate to. Council comments? Councilmember Dan?
Yeah, I just have one comment. I sit on the Monterey Regional Waste Management District, and I, I just wanted to bring up, we have one board member that is retiring from the board, and that's Gary Bales.
Oh, yeah.
Gary is the former city manager at Pacific Grove. And the only reason I bring that up is that he's been sitting on the board for 52 years.
Oh, my.
Which is amazing to me, if you can imagine sitting on the council for 52 years. That is a long time for public service. And I want to congratulate Gary, and I won't say anything, Clyde, but congratulations to Gary on, on his commitment to our, our district. And I just wanted to bring that up to the council.
Thank you so much. Charlie Benson was a member of the the Waste Management District for many, 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 many years, and they named the entrance after him too. So hopefully they'll do something for Gary. I remember when he was the city manager.
They, they did name the boardroom after him.
Nice, thank you. Other council comments?
I'll just say congratulations to all the high school graduates in Monterey County, and especially to Monterey. And Dan, you didn't say it, but I'll say go Doors, and congratulations on them, and wishing them luck, and also our generation, young and old, to be in a position to help support them as they move forward in their lives. In whatever way they need it, reach out to us. We want to see you successful. Congratulations all.
Go Doors.
There you go. Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Um, yeah, last, was it last week? It was the fourth, the fourth Tuesday in May, I think it was the 25th. Participated with the Monterey Kiwanis Club in a park maintenance project. And this is going to be an ongoing project. So if there's anyone listening who would be interested in joining us, you don't have to join the Monterey Kiwanis Club to participate. But basically, we're working with city staff and maintaining the park along the rec trail, kind of between our sister city park and the basketball courts.
Nice.
So our next, our next event will be June 22nd. So they're always the fourth Tuesday from 2:30 to 4:00. And if you want more information, people can contact me at hoffa@monterey.org, or you can visit montereykiwanis.org.
Very nice, thank you. Councilmember Tyler?
I just want to thank you all for your support on, on the, the resolution there. Thank you.
Our pleasure. City managers' reports?
Very, very briefly, this today marks the start of the summer reading program. The summer reading program is very important. Kids can sign up and will receive awards at the end of that program. It ends on July 31st. Please, if you're interested to have your, your, your children or grandchildren sign up for that, go to the library's website and start the summer reading program together with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, again, we thank you, council, staff, public, for making this another really worthwhile, informative meeting. I do appreciate you all. We're adjourned. Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.
Night.